All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, December 10th, 5:00 PM. Special City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to an end and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Desiree, do you mind doing a roll call? Just confirm quorum.
Of course. Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Don't think we have citizens' comments?
We do not.
All right, first item is special presentation swearing in of Rusty Streetman to the Isle of Palms City Council. Rusty and family, y'all want to come join? And Desiree will do the honors. Rusty, y'all brought your own Bible? Good, I figured you would. Thank you.
I didn't realize you needed the folder. You don't have it memorized either.
I, Rusty Streetman.
I, Rusty Streetman.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
As a council member of the city of Isle of Palms.
As a council member of the city of Isle of Palms.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Desiree, could you make that a little bit longer?
She broke at a good spot.
I almost did word by word, just in case.
Very good. Thank you, Desiree, for stepping in for Nicole Rusty. Welcome back.
Thank you. Happy to be back.
All right, purpose first is consideration of nominations and appointments to standing committees for 2025. We'll just do them all in one chunk. Administration, John Bogosian, Jimmy Ward, Philip Pounds, Ashley Carroll to replace me after city administrator role is filled. Ashley, thank you for your flexibility on that. Public safety, John Bogosian, Jan Anderson, and Rusty Streetman. Public services and facilities, Katie Myers, Scott Pierce, and Blair Hahn. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consideration, nominations, and appointments. We'll do all those at the same time as all. Also, Carter Board of Directors, Jimmy Ward. Charleston Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Rusty Streetman. Charleston, Berkeley, Dorchester Council of Governments, Jan Anderson. And Environmental Advisory Committee, Katie Myers. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of appointments to boards and commissions, planning commissions, two-year terms expiring 12/26. David Cohen, Tim Ammody, and Sandy Stone. Environmental Advisory Committee, three-year terms expiring 12/27. Mary Pringle, Cindy Mars, Eric Sikora, and Sean Popson. Board of zoning appeals, three-year terms, term expiring in 12/27. Suzie Wheeler and Glenn Thornburg. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, consideration, second reading of ordinance 2024-07, and ordinance to permanently amend the standing committees starting January 1st, 2025. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, second reading. Comments, discussion? Jimmy?
Will the work sessions continue, the workshops?
They will. Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to just suggest one edit. It's the same edit but for multiple components on the ordinance. There are multiple areas where it says "if requested" and then others where it's basically the responsibility of the committee. My suggestion is on the administrative committee on A, that the "if requested" be removed. Same with C, I'm sorry, E, F, G, and H, or I'm sorry, E, F, and G. And then on the public safety committee, it says "if requested" on A, and then on public facilities on A. Just remove that "if requested." I think that might be an update and maybe clarify that these are the responsibility of the committee.
Is that an amended?
amended motion.
I'll second that.
Does really any background? I know this is historical to some degree. And typically, the city administrators come into these committees for help with boards, commissions, budgets, and so on. So, any comment from your view?
No. Honestly, the history of this section of the ordinance, I can't really speak to it. I do know that it's the same as it has been before council a few years decided to amend the ordinance and consolidate the standing committees. In some instances, for example, under the administration committee, what councilmember Pierce was referencing is whether city council can request the committee to do the screening for candidates of boards and commissions. I think historically, the committee has taken on that role, so I don't think it would change anything. On the other two committees, the city administrator has historically worked with the committee in the development of the budget for each committee. So again, I don't think it changes anything. I think that the changes as being requested would follow historical practice. It would just clarify that some of these responsibilities would fall on the committee regardless of whether council requests it or not.
John?
I feel like it would be helpful to have some clarity, especially with a new city administrator coming in. Just make it clearer and feel like it makes sense.
Jimmy? I have a question. Are you speaking of if council requests it? Or in the past, my understanding has been if the administrator requests it, especially when it comes to the budget?
Correct. So, the two items under public safety and public services and facilities is specific to whether the city administrator requests the committee assistance in the development of the budget. So, that is specific to the city administrator making that request of the committee. But the items under the administration committee, my understanding is it's whether or not city council requests that. Because the city administrator does not have, I think, the authority to make recommendations of candidates for boards and commissions.
Okay, but how about the budget? It says "if requested." What if the city administrator does not request it? It takes the work off of the city council and the committees?
No, no. It would be taking the, it would make it so that the committee has to help the city administrator. The city administrator couldn't do it on their own.
The point is, the question is if requested by the administrator or requested by council?
So, that's, so in some instances, under the administration committee, the items that included requested, my understanding is that's referencing to city council requesting the committee to do the screening for boards and commissions, assisting the interviewing and recommending candidates for city attorney. And the same thing with developing public information programs aimed at citizen engagement. The two sects, the other two sections, which are included under the public safety committee, the committee, the way that it reads now, it says the committee's duties are to, A, if requested, assist the city administrator in the preparation of the annual expense budget for the police and fire departments. The code requires and establishes the duty of the city administrator to prepare the budget and present a budget to city council. So, the way I read it is an administrator could have the, could make the decision to not request assistance from the committee, which has never happened, and that would be a silly thing to do.
One, we just clean it up and just take that out of there.
And I think that that's what the motion does.
And I think even that's part of the issue, and I agree with you, Desiree. This is a legacy. This, you know, I think this originated back in 1988. And the "if requested," it doesn't even state who requests.
Yeah.
So, I think if we just clear it up, it would be helpful.
First, we've got an amendment. We need to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we've got the original second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Sorry. Thank you. Next item is update on beach conditions and status of shoal management and consideration of approving additional funding for sandbags as needed if emergency triggered or met. Typically, this is more of a procedural ceremonial council meeting, but this is our last one for the year. It had been a little while since we'd done an update. It's going to be a little while before we'll have another council meeting, so we've asked Stephen to come and give us an update and kind of what's going on on both ends of the island, as well as permitting and such. So, Mr. Trainum, thank you, as always.
Appreciate it. I'll try to keep it short, but happy to respond to any questions. First, I would just like to thank Desiree for the several years working together. It's been a pleasure to work with you. You've been a great job, or you've done a great job for the city and made my life a lot easier. So, thank you. You will be sorely missed, but good luck.
Thank you, Stephen.
In your next adventure. And then Rusty, welcome back. So, a quick update on a lot of things going on on your beach here. Several different projects going on at the same time. We have emergency work going on at both ends of the island, the south end and the north end. We have a permit application out for a shoal management project. We have a Corps of Engineers beneficial use project that also includes supplemental dune restoration work that the city is sponsoring. We have a permit being put together and the engineering being done for large-scale nourishment, and we have ongoing monitoring. The current conditions at the south end, this top right photo is from today. There's actually a pretty good berm in front of most of the properties at the south end, south of Fifth Avenue. We are out of our king tide season now. We have got through the over-seven-foot predicted tides. We do, and I'll mention this in a minute, we do have this upcoming weekend, we're about to a six-and-a-half tide predicted again. So, we may have some impacts this weekend. You're likely to get water back up to the bags then, but then after that, we don't have another predicted tide above six feet through February. So, we're in a little bit better position right now in normal weather conditions. Now, if we have a big nor'easter that comes and sets off the coast, then, you know, that's a major storm impact and will certainly change the way things look. Right now, there is kind of an erosional arc close to Fifth Avenue between Fifth and Sixth. That's the only area on the south end that we see actively eroding. And there's a lot of sand north of there that looks like it's kind of moving down. So, it's looking okay, favorable. I don't want to be overly optimistic with it, but it certainly is looking a little bit better than it has in recent months.
Steve, are the residents still trucking in sand? Because I saw, I think that's Curtis and Carlos' house they trucked in, that sand behind the sandbags, and that's, you're saying the natural is accreting as well?
I'm not sure the last time a resident trucked in sand, it's been the bottom photos with the aerial, you see a truck. Those were done either last week or the week before. Anywhere outside of the Fifth Avenue, Fifth to Sixth, the dunes are holding up. You can see where people have trucked in the area south of Fifth. There hasn't been any impacts behind the bags. And again, that berm's built out in front of it. There's been a ridge and runnel that's kind of attached to the beach and helped build those berms out some more. I'll discuss the sandbags here in a second. Up at the north end, you see a couple of aerials of where the shoal currently is. And just to highlight a couple of things, the area in front of the Grand Pavilion, which you can see on that bottom-left photo, has continued to kind of benefit from some sand that's attaching us all the way down there. Did I do that? There it is. So, that's helped maintain the beach width in front of the Grand Pavilion area. The erosional hotspot at Beachwood East is just between that attaching sand and then the large shoal that's further to the north. The image on the top left shows a vertical, and right now, there's kind of two front edges of the shoal. There's one that's underwater, that's really close to the beach, almost attached. You can see a little bit of a dark water that's only, you know, 20, 30 feet wide. And then a platform of sand, and then the exposed part of the shoal's about 300 feet offshore right now. That higher sand is kind of slowly overtopping that, the lower sand. So, it's not coming on quite as fast as I was hoping it would, but it still should be attached or coming close to attached over the next two to three months. At least it will be getting very close to being accessible by then. There's a lot of sand out in the shoal that's getting ready to attach. You can see the beach behind that shoal building out, covering most of the Beach Club Mariners' Walk area, the property owner's beach house. But as you get towards Dune Crest, Dune Crest is kind of the transition between where the beach is gaining and where it's eroding. And then further to the north, up at the Ocean Club building, that's where we're seeing more of the active erosion occurring. Again, this week, it's been pretty stable, but with significant storms, that area is going to probably be the focus of additional erosion that may need some actual mitigation. So, what we're looking at over the next two months or so, again, we're through the king tides. This is looking at just the tide chart over the next 30 days. You can see where we're at, and anything below six is great. Anything below seven, at this point, we'll take. So, this is very favorable. I think I mentioned most of that. Looking at the core project, right now, they're still working over at Sullivan's Island. This is a photo from today to kind of show you what that project looks like. They're pumping sand kind of right towards the middle part of the photo, so you can see the bulge of sand that's out at the low-tide line. Sullivan's is a little different than Isle of Palms, but your project will look very similar. They just have that one excavator and a piece of pipe that is discharging the material. So, they will, just found out today that they're actually going to start up at the Ninth Avenue area. They're going to start from the north and then work their way back to the south. It's easier for them to remove sections of pipe and work back as opposed to adding sections of pipe and working forward. But there will probably be less volume up at the north end because that's a healthier beach. So, we're going to work with the Corps to try to optimize where the sand's being placed to account for the current condition of the beach.
Any date for that?
So, they're looking at finishing up with Sullivan's around the end of this year. It'll probably take them about two weeks to transition the pipe and move the dredge to the new harvest area. So, we're looking right around mid-January is their latest estimate to, excuse me, mid-January to start pumping sand over on Isle of Palms.
They're currently on the Sullivan's Island side, there's a huge pile of dry sand. Has that been scraped up? Is that what that is?
Correct. So, over by Thompson Park, and now they're working further towards like Station 30. They are doing a very similar project where they're taking the sand that the Corps placed in the low-tide zone and moving it up into the dunes.
Okay. So, we will see the same type of thing?
Correct.
We'll be scraping and have same volume of sand on our beach?
Correct. So, on the bottom of this photo, you see the two dump trucks, an excavator, and a bulldozer. That's Collins, who is doing the work for the town of Sullivan's. And you can see the dune that's in front of those houses. That's the dune that's still not finished but being built over on the Sullivan's side.
And Stephen, Blair, to your point, so the same contractor that's on Sullivan's doing the work is the same we've already contracted, which would be our next item. And you may be on getting to this, already said it, but we have permit in hand for this particular project.
Correct.
So, Stephen, what we see down there now is that's the finished product at this point, what Collins has done and the way the dune is mounted up and in sloping?
Correct. And over there, their beach and their dune area behind that dune was so low that it does look pretty large. It will look a little bit more natural over here because you have a higher upland area behind that dune. But as far as the overall height relative to sea level and the width of the dune, we're looking for a similar design. We'll probably steepen up the slope just a little bit because there's, the slope is pretty wide over there.
There's also been a fair amount of chatter, I guess is the right word, about that the sand was dirty and that nobody knew if this would work, sifting out the dirt so we just had good sand. It appears on Sullivan's Island that sand looks pristine, is not the right word, but very clean. So, what they're doing is working?
Sure. The sand is pretty fine as you compare to most nourishment projects, but it certainly is beach-compatible. They have hit periods where there's been more mud in it or silt in it. So, you may go on one day and see that the sand's a little soupier or that there are some mud balls on the beach. And it's not a ton, but it's there. If you give it a couple of days, it dissipates, and that's part of the reason they're putting it out in low tide is to let it kind of wash itself out. But overall, I'm pretty happy with the way the material's looking. And supposedly, the material over here is supposed to be better than what was over there. So.
Great. Thank you. Stephen, just one question about that, just to make sure. Expectations when this starts to happen, is there a smell associated with it from organic materials that are pumped off until the sand cleans itself?
It's very common in nourishment projects to have that. I haven't noticed it over here near to the extent that we typically do on our large-scale projects. So, it's not been too bad at all. And it's a fairly slow operation. They're moving up to 5,000 or 6,000 yards a day. You know, our projects that we've done on the east end will move 40,000 yards a day on a good day. So, it's a lot more of an impact with those big projects.
Steve, do you think 50,000 cubic yards, we've got a lot longer stretch than Sullivan's, is that enough to replicate that kind of a dune mass?
500,000.
500,000.
No, the 50,000's going to get pushed. The 500's deposit, the 50,000, I think, is to restore the dunes, if I'm reading that right?
No.
Yeah. 50,000 is what the town is looking, or excuse me, the city is looking to contract to move up into the dunes. There's actually only about 20,000 yards is needed to build a dune along that entire stretch. The permit allowed for another 30,000 yards to be able to shift south of where they're placing, because they're stopping at Second Avenue. They're not placing material any further south. And at the time, south of Second Avenue was incredibly eroded, and we were anticipating having to actually kind of build a beach in that area as well. So, we have some flexibility to be able to supplement the beach width in some areas with that extra volume.
So, it's going to stop at the 200, you're saying?
The core project will stop at 200. Our project will extend the entire length of the beach from breach inlet to 10th Avenue.
And the other 450,000 is out in the dry beach?
It'll be out in the low-tide beach, but nature will push that material up kind of like a sandbar over time. And we're doing a survey of that this week to kind of see how much is out underwater as opposed to in the, kind of the low-tide visible beach area.
Thank you.
And other potential good news, and I don't want to throw the Corps out on a limb here, but they are looking at doing some emergency dredging of the waterway, right end breach inlet to help with navigation. So, there is a high potential that they're able to add another 50,000 yards of sand to Isle of Palms, separate from this original project. I can't commit to that yet. They're trying to finalize the contract for that, but that would be another benefit. We do anticipate the supplemental work to probably start one to two months after the Corps to allow them to get enough material out in that low-tide zone to recover. We'll try to work, you know, as quickly as we can, but we don't want to overlap with, you know, getting equipment over the top of each other. But Atna, the Corps contractor, has been very good to work with so far.
Just slow. But good, the slows.
So, for sandbags, these bags definitely are holding up a lot better than the white super sacks that have been used in years past. They do require some maintenance, though, as we have storms that shift them around or just particular weak points. We've been collecting periodic surveys of the bags to establish what the current elevations are, and we have a design of about seven and a half to eight feet in elevation relative to sea level. Has proven to kind of be a sustainable height to protect through king tide events and minor storm events. So, looking ahead of what we might need in the next two months, assuming that we do have some type of storm event, really, I think the most of the work would be needed up in the Ocean Club, the Seaside area. And if we assume that we have to do a full revetment across those, we're looking at somewhere between 200 and 250 bags. The remainder of the area around Beachwood and the south end, a lot of that could be handled just by some routine maintenance and shifting some bags up, but there may be a need for maybe up to another 100 bags or so to supplement some areas where bags were damaged or there may be a void or a hole. Or if you look at one property, their, you know, their entire stretch is maybe a foot and a half lower than ideal. So, that's kind of a recommendation up for council. Y'all tell me when you want to talk about that. But we're, what I think the best strategy would be is to have funding available to quickly be able to deploy up to another 200 bags, so that if we do have a storm, we don't have to wait, you know, two weeks to do procurement and get bags ordered. I believe that the contractor has them on the shelf now, so we're, you know, we're looking at being able to deploy in two to three days instead of, you know, three to four weeks. But having that funding to be able to kind of respond to a storm. I don't know that there's a lot that needs to be done today. And you kind of have to ask, you know, do you put it all out ahead of time? Or do you kind of look at the favorable weather, knowing that we have the core project, we have this shoal project, you know, and kind of trying to keep our eggs in our basket until we need it soon?
So, Stephen, just to be clear, what you're suggesting is that we not do what we did last time, which we went out and purchased the bags, filled them, and had them ready. You're suggesting that you have the funding ready, that if you need them, you'd pull the trigger and then go and buy them?
Correct. Because I think the turnaround time from being able to get them deployed upon order, we're talking a few days now instead of several weeks.
And again, Stephen, we've put out everything we've purchased to date, and this is only if emergencies required within 20 feet or we need to do some maintenance. So, we may approve an amount, kind of to John's point, we may approve an amount tonight. Hopefully, would never get used, quite honestly, but you're anticipating some level of additional bags needed?
Yes. And there's another option of should the core project come and the bags at the south end are no longer needed, we may be able to transport those to the north end at a much lower cost, already filled bags. I think Doug's spoken with the contractor about that. I'm not sure if we have pricing on what that may be relative to a new bag, but the hope is that we can move some of those bags and for, if it's a fairly cheap cost, supplement what's up there.
How many of those bags do we have filled at this point?
In place at the south end? I think there's somewhere around 500 at the south end.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd authorize 800, I think.
Do we have to get them all out before?
Correct. So, once the dune project's in place and right along that, we do have to remove the bags. That's a permit requirement up there.
But that's, I mean, that's like scheduled and will hap, I mean, how is that going to be coordinated?
I guess that would have to be bid, or we could modify, if we award a contract to Collins, modify that to include removal, which I think they've provided a quote for. I know the city did obtain quotes for bag removal as part of the permitting process. You had to have quotes, so we can look at that.
Like you said, it was like 10% of them.
So, when they remove them, they're taking them off the island, so we're not buying the bags, we're renting them?
Correct. You get to keep the sand, though. They empty this, if they're removed, if they're not transported to another area on the beach, we'll dump the sand out, so you're at least gaining a yard per bag.
They're not reusable bags.
They're not.
No.
Now, we got back to the more favorable pricing than we were, we had that little glitch that got taken care of or something.
Yeah, we're paying $550 per bag filled.
$550?
I thought it was 450.
Katie, to your question, because I debated even putting this on the agenda, quite honestly, because we're, you know, the two projects are just right in front of us literally. But we've been having this conversation for 24 months now that the project's just right in front of us. It feels like we're on the two-yard line to finish this thing before the shoal project happens, before the Army Corps project happens. I mean, it seems reasonable to approve some amount just to let staff and Stephen do what they feel needs to happen without us having to call a special meeting and make something happen. But, you know, we're going to put these things out. And in theory, in months to two months, pull them right back up. But I just, I think we're going to have a need.
I guess I'm more concerned about the timing of actually getting, A, getting the bags off in time for the core project, but then also not having a gap in between when we remove the bags and they actually, you know, finally come and show up and do the work. Like, I'm just, I feel like that's going to be kind of a hard.
We've dealt with that before with the large-scale projects and actually having to build a beach around bags to protect the house before taking the bags out. Or actually, it was Ocean Club building.
So, it's not like they're going to say, we won't do the work if the bags are there.
Right. We'll do the Army Corps work first and then take them out.
Okay.
Aren't the bags down around Second Avenue? And we're starting the nourishment project up at, what'd you say, Fifth Avenue?
Ninth Avenue.
Ninth Avenue. So, well, at least they will already be there working when we take the bags out.
Yeah. I don't think the removal logistics are too much of an issue.
200 bags, about $120,000. Is that what that you're looking for?
Hmm.
At 550, I think 200 is.
I think it's.
Maybe it's 450.
I think it's 450.
450, $450,000?
$450 per bag.
Oh, 450.
Per bag.
Douglas, what were you going to say?
I was just going to add to your point about, you know, we're kind of doing this work potentially right before we take them up. We would, and we specifically asked Stephen, you know, knowing that you are not going to be meeting at the end of this month, you're not going to be meeting really until the end of January, knowing, and we do feel like we're in a pretty good condition for the time being with the tides and the condition of the beach as it is, but just fearful of an event coming up. So, we would really only add these bags in the event that we had water closer to 20 feet and the sand berm lower than the kind of target of 7.6. So, it's a pretty narrow set of conditions that would have to be met before we implemented these bags. But I think, you know, from our perspective, we've kind of gotten all the way to the finish line. It would be a shame to kind of not provide that barrier right to the very end. So, we hope that we won't have to. I think it's very possible. And I think the window on the north end, particularly around Ocean Club and Seaside, I mean, that's actively eroding. We don't, that's a fairly new and small sandbag embankment. I think we anticipate that barrier getting bigger in the very near future. So, we are expecting that we probably will have to do work specifically in front of those two buildings. As I mentioned, if we can, and the contractor's agreeable, it's going to be difficult to price. But this idea of moving some of the newly installed bags on the Beechwood East, I'm sorry, at the Breach Inlet end to Ocean Club, we're hoping that that will work out, but just didn't want to be in a position where people are away for vacation. We can't get a meeting called, and we have a need for these. So, kind of like we do with air conditioners, we would say, we're asking for this request, you know, if needed before the next meeting, and we can give you an update towards the end of January.
So, what's the number we're looking to approve? 230 or 240?
Stephen's note says between 100 and 200 bags.
200 bags would be 95.
If it's 200 bags times 450, that's $90,000. Check my math.
Yep.
That's right.
And again, that's just an amount to approve.
Make it 100 or whatever.
Approve an allocation that would allow the staff to procure these in a short period of time if needed. Again, back to what those triggers would be.
I was, I was just going to say, in my mind, having talked to Stephen, I was thinking of having approval of all of those. So, the 250, the 80, and the 80 to be used as needed. But if Stephen feels confident that we would only need up to 200, I'm okay with that. But in my mind, I was thinking.
The total of that.
400.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify.
That's 185,000.
Those higher numbers at the top three lines were more of a conservative, like, let's fill every bag that's currently a little low. But based off the conditions, that's really not needed today. So, it's a range in there on how proactive do you want to be on it.
Well, and again, the timing of these two projects, the ability to pull some from Breach Inlet to the other end of the island is hopeful. We don't, that's not a definitive, but that's hopeful, certainly.
Just remember, last year, the big storm hit in December.
Yeah. So, what are we looking for with our motion?
According to the latest inventory that Stephen provided to us, we were looking at 420 bags for all locations as potential, a potential need between the next couple of months.
But are you coming off of that, Stephen, now, given what you are seeing?
I know that was last week. I know you just did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, that was looking at, you know, if you're trying to build it all today, you know, that would be plenty to cover the entire area today. If you're looking at what do we need over the next month or so, I think 200's fine. If you're trying to be as conservative as you can be and kind of open up, again, we would not, we would only do this if we felt like it was needed, especially after an event. So, it's, you know, money we're going to try to save, for sure.
Yeah, I would recommend approving 200 bags based on the update today. Council will have a meeting on January 7th. If conditions have changed in the next three, four weeks, I think that would be another opportunity. But that may, that may feel like a reasonable approach at this point.
So, would 100 cover that and make a motion for 100,000, authorize up to $100,000 and get your 200-plus bags?
Yeah.
Douglas, you.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think one way is potentially coming back a little bit earlier than we would have otherwise. But that's probably not a bad, bad thing to just keep you all updated.
But allows you all to pull the trigger whenever you need to do it.
We'll make it till.
Over the next month.
And I would also say this doesn't preclude any individual property owner for doing what they feel like they need to do to protect private property.
If their triggers are met.
If the triggers are met, correct.
There.
So, yeah, made the motion to.
Motion in a second. Yeah. Are you good with this, Scott? At 100,000?
I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing the math of what they're asking for.
Going off of Stephen's commentary. Other comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stephen, thank you. Next item is consideration of award of contract.
Mayor, I have a couple more updates.
Oh, sorry. Fire away, man. I'm on a mission.
That was a good time to leave. Shoal management project status, that's, that permit's out. We are waiting on Fish and Wildlife to issue the biological opinion. They did not give me a great update this week on their progress. They're looking at it still a couple more months because they're out of, they're working on some emergency work in the Gulf. So, we are going to make phone calls to try to get that moving along through any other means we can. That's what the state's waiting on. The state's kind of ready to issue their permit. We've done everything that we need to do. We've responded to public comments. Most of the public comments really focused on the idea of public sand versus private sand, public money versus private beach. That doesn't really apply. This is all public beach, and the laws and policies allow this type of work to be done. I do believe we probably should start that bid process in early January to start soliciting contractors to do the work, just so we're staying ahead of that.
Stephen, to your point, if we had a permit today, it wouldn't matter because the shoal is not close enough to grab it.
Correct. Worst-case scenario, though, we are able to harvest sand on the leeward part of the shoal, so where the beach is accreting behind it. Rather than taking it from the shoal, we could take it from the beach and know that the shoal's coming in to refill it. We're probably not going to be able to get the full volume that we would want to that way. But if the shoal is not accessible, that's what we would revert to.
Stephen, I have a question about the part by Ocean Club, north of that, I guess. Once the shoal comes in, will it help sand build in that part of the island? Because now we've got this barrier of the shoal there.
Yes. So, once the shoal attaches, it spreads sand in both directions. So, one, our project has the ability to place sand in both areas, the Ocean Club area and the Beechwood area. And that includes additional properties either side of, just general terms. I think I had a better photo of that back here. But the natural shoal does spread sand in both directions. And we saw significant recovery in 2017, 2018 of that area in front of Ocean Club. The wave dissipation device got completely buried by natural sand spreading from the recently attached shoal.
So, you expect improvement once we get the shoal management project in place?
Yes. And if we weren't, if we couldn't do a shoal management project, then nature would do that for us. But it may take another 12, 18, 24 months for that sand to move down there. I'll kind of skip through that because that's just some of the details of the project we've discussed before. Large-scale nourishment, right now, we're waiting on collection of additional borings from the contractor who takes the sediment borings offshore in the potential borrow areas. We're working on the environmental documents and the engineering analysis for that permit application, and still continuing to work with Shippo on the second stone fleet work where we're trying to work with them and around the historic sites there to find the best quality sand. We also are kind of awaiting for the recommendations from the Beach Ad Hoc Committee. If there's anything that comes out of that that may need to get included in the permanent application, we'll include that. But we should be able to submit the permanent application around March, April, 2025. And based off that schedule, likely to get the permit in late '25, maybe early '26. And that's my update. So, Mr. Mayor, now we can move on. Unless there are any other questions?
No. Other questions for Stephen? So, to that update, thank you, Stephen. Consideration of an award of a contract to Collins Construction for supplemental dune work as part of the Army Corps Beneficial Use Project for Breach Inlet in the amount of $425,000.
Motion to approve.
Just a little bit of background.
Second, yep.
Back in July, when we were preparing for the Army Corps of Engineers Beneficial Use Project to start this fall, we issued a request for bids and proposals for the minor beach work and dune work associated with this project. Only one contractor, Collins, submitted a bid of $8.50 per cubic yard based on the scope of work that we've discussed today and that we included in that RV process. It would be moving 50,000 cubic yards of sand, which gets us to the 425,000. We were building the budget early this year. We had an estimated amount, included a 400,000. So, it's a little bit over what we have budgeted for this specific project. So, I just wanted to make note of that. And also, this amount does not include the expenditure of removing bags, moving them, or disposing them. So, just wanted to make note of that as well for the record.
So, to Stephen's comment, when do we, when should we bid that? And that's going to be a separate contract, may be Collins or may not be Collins. But that'll be a January.
The removal, yes. You know, Stephen's recommendation is we wait 30 to 60 days after the Army Corps of Engineers starts placing sand. So, we have a little bit of time. I just, one of the things that I would want to get wrapped up is just getting them under contract. And, you know, in the event that they have a, they can put us in their schedule and there's no other project that could take them away, and then we lose our ability to use the same contractor that's working at Sullivan's and has worked with us.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There be no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
One more before.
There's nothing on the agenda.
Nothing on the agenda.
I'd just like to make a comment. I believe this is Desiree's last meeting.
It is.
And I'd just like to thank her for all her service and how much we appreciate all she's done for this island. And we wish you the best.
Thank you.
And expect to see great things from you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. I've said enough about Desiree. I'm done. Motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.